This meeting is being recorded, may be broadcasted or rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. As all -- I'll begin in congratulating Jeff Morissette and his promotion to Assistant Town Manager. Congratulations, Jeff. A promotion well deserved.
Thank you very much.
I'll go to staff. Any other open forum items?
No, sir.
To the board.
No.
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 The audience. All right, moving right along. We'll go to our public hearing. First item tonight is PB 2401, amend zoning bylaw to create the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing Overlay District. Morissette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, as tasked by the board, we do have a draft planning board report and recommendation in your packets for consideration. We did have this reviewed by town council. They recommended only one minor change to draft finding number 18. We sent that language. In substance, we think it's the same. As you know, one of the concerns from the state of the municipal law unit is they want to avoid the appearance of any undue discretion. And so council just adjusted this wording slightly to remove any, you know, potential overbias there. We do also have Kelly Linema from NIMCOG, our regional planning agency here, in case you have questions relevant to her expertise. Also on the phone, we have Dylan Sussman from Dodson and Flinker, our planning consultant that's helped us all along. And then in addition to that, I want to call out that we have one very minor suggested change, the draft language. This popped up a few times during our deliberations. In, on pages, I believe, five and six, there's the dimensional table. And relative to items one and two that immediately follow that table, one talks about the front yard setbacks for buildings on Littleton Concord and Powers Road, and the second is about the limitation on the height of buildings. Well, there are some special instances or exceptions to that. And so if you go back up under front yard setback, we thought the most appropriate thing to make it clear is to put perhaps an asterisk after front yard setback and put an asterisk at note one, so that also reads, refers to front yard setback. And then we do a double asterisk for the building height. It would correspond to the number two after the table, so people can... If we did a footnote, then we'd have duplicative language. It'd be more effort to do the footnoting and redundant information. So we think that's the simplest way to call out that extra attention to that. And I'm sure that would be some comments tonight. Anyhow, and again, we look forward to your input, more input from the public. You know, we have continued to do some outreach with many of the boards and committees. So far, we have votes of recommendation from the Westford Housing Authority, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and of course, the Advisory Committee, MCMAC, all voted to take positive recommendations on this for town meeting. So if you have any questions...
Are there any outstanding committees you still have to present to?
We have presented to all that have requested, there is a possibility that the Commission on Disability is meeting this Wednesday. They are considering taking a position on this matter. The Council on Aging may also be meeting this Wednesday, and they would like to take a position on this bylaw. While we educated the Finance Committee, they didn't choose to take a position on this matter. Didn't feel, felt, fit squarely in their purview. We've sent information to other boards and committees.
Economic Development Committee.
Yes, the Economic Development Committee did take a vote to recommend this, actually. I apologize for that oversight.
And affordable housing will be voting.
And affordable housing is scheduled for Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, yeah.
And Joan has been...
Briefing them all along.
Yes, thank you. Really appreciate it. And of course, we did do a recent, you know, lunch and learn at the Cameron Senior Center. You know, I think we had about 60 attendees, and I think they asked a lot of good questions and was pretty informative, so.
And, and we have the article for the League of Women Voters newsletter that we're, should be going in.
Okay, great. So I guess I'll go first to the board. Review of the most recent draft and the recommendation. Bob, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment first, as I do this, on the lunch and learn was really an excellent presentation from Joe and Jeff. There was actually about 60 people in attendance. About 45 of them were, I guess, in that senior attendee crowd. There was another 15 of us that were there from town committees, town staff, the... Kristin Lass was there, as well as just the senior center staff. So what was good was, it was a very positive reception. I think there was at least three or four people that outright said during their questions and talks, they were in strong support of it. I didn't hear any negativity. There was just concerned questions that were addressed. The one thing I did want to run down real quickly here was I saw three different areas of questions. And I think it's probably indicative of what we will see at town meeting. They, the first question that was really pretty insightful was asking about, given that we hope there'll be a positive revenue stream from this for the town through increased taxes, would this in any way affect the override situation for FY '25? And the obvious answer is no. The first revenues are really probably FY '27, '28, according to Jeff, at this point. And then they just wanted to ask a little bit about, they did have questions about the cost impacts to the infrastructure, understanding water enterprise, emergency services, schools, trash recycling, and roads, highway. Jeff addressed all of those. There was one very tough question at the end that really couldn't be answered. And that was, somebody asked, you've got these two different sizing models from the town and from the state in terms of how many units are going to come out of this overlay district. Could you provide some kind of a corresponding costing model to help understand what would be the service demands for maybe the overall was what they wanted, but even just understanding different types of developments, different densities, what would be the requirement in terms of, let's say, emergency services? Or what's the impact of the water enterprise? And also understanding from those departments what their capacities were to address these new demands. So I expect we'll hear that at town meeting. We did talk, Jeff and I think you were part of that, and Joe after the meeting. But it's, that's a very tough question to really answer adequately and accurately. But it is showing people are thinking about the impact. And then the, the last area...
I don't, I don't know if I could just chime in briefly on that. We did reach out to police and fire. Police did give an indication based on some recommended guidelines, which they actually use for their current staffing ratios. They would want to maintain their current ratios relative to population. So we are working on getting, you know, a high level estimate what that would be in terms of, you know, if you add so many, you know, 500 more residents or 1,000, what does that translate into, into the number of employees? So we are getting some high level figures on that. For fire department, though, it's actually much more challenging for them to estimate. There's too many variables. It depends a lot on the nature of the call, what it is, you know, whether it's medical or not. So they're going to give some thought to that, and they're going to work, you know, to being prepared for town meeting. But it's far more subject to change, and there's, there's even more variables than with relative to police department. So it's really going to be almost impossible to predict, but they can certainly give their best guess or range.
Anything from the Water Department?
We have a follow-up conversation scheduled with the Water Superintendent. The only beneficial thing I'll say is that in most cases, it would be sort of making use of the location of the existing infrastructure. So it could add some greater efficiencies if you're, as long as they're able to make those adjustments. Because if you have more customers essentially making more use of existing infrastructure, that can be a positive. But again, if there are infrastructure improvements needed for these projects, that's not the obligation of the town. That's really on the part of the developer. So, but we'll, we're going to get some better information from the Water Department on that.
Thank you.
The next thing I should add also, Westford Cat did record the presentation portion of the meeting. They unfortunately didn't bring the wireless mics, so they were not able to adequately record the Q and A session. It was in fact a little hard to hear the questions. You had to be really paying attention because the people spoke fairly low in volume. But there should, that should be on Westford Cat now, that presentation from Joe and Jeff.
Great. That's great.
Sorry. The, the second area that they talked about was the physical, the questions were physical dimensional characteristics. And the opening question, I think, out of the box, does this mean there'll be high rises in Westford? Answer was no. Jeff explained maximum four stories and gave the Bell of Westford, I think, as the example. And also explained that Bell of Westford was a good example for the density, about 10 per acre. You know, 15 per acre is allowed by right, but we probably won't see it given the, the dimensional aspects that we have here per Westford. The last area that they asked about was just the bylaw adoption process. I know Jeff is going to amend his presentation style because he forgot to mention the simple majority versus a two-thirds majority for this particular style bylaw.
We do, sorry, we do have a written opinion from council, I think, in your packet that confirming they do believe is entitled to the simple majority vote.
So the last thing I'll say here relative to that meeting, one of the tough questions also at the end was a resident asking, kind of thinking along the lines of what happens with chapter 48 when you hit the threshold, is there a shut-off trigger with this? And the answer was no. The difference between this and 40, the 40B obviously is, it's not even mandatory to build one unit. It's we have to create the district and create the opportunity to build the units. But you know, if we hit 924, that, that doesn't turn this off. It, it would continue on. And so that got into, I did ask some questions with Joe about that relative to Attorney Justin Paradas' opinion and whether or not in the future, because this was kind of also asked at that, that session. You hit the 924, is it permissible now to repeal the overlay district from additional units? And I think in talking with Joe, that would be challenging because there are other requirements you have to meet besides just the capacity for the number of units. You have to allow for a certain amount of contiguous lots. And so the other part of my question, I still think we should know by town meeting, is if that were to happen in the future and you did want to amend the overlay district, what would be the approval required? Is it a simple versus a two-thirds majority?
We did, our council is working on that opinion.
Yeah. So, but yeah. And thank you. I did also ask that maybe some kind of footnote or something be indicated because I think with the size of that dimensional requirements table, and I have talked to a few people in town that asked me about this and pulled up the thing, the table to show them, it's, it's not obvious when you read it that, you know, the setbacks are exempt or have to be the conventional setbacks for Littleton Concord and Powers Road. So I think calling that out up, up above is good. It, it will avoid any confusion in the future. So that's, that's really my report, but I think it's been going well. And as I say, I was very, very pleasantly satisfied with the reception. And it kind of indicates, because we kind of have a closed audience here sometimes. But we've had a good cross-section, and they were really in, in favor of this. Whether they would benefit for themselves or their children would that want, that, you know, try to move back into town. It was very well received.
Great. Next. All right, Joni?
No, nothing else.
Dylan?
No, in general, I'm in favor of this. I think that this is good and I'm prepared to support it. The one question that I do have, and I guess I would slightly question whether or not this doesn't beg that the town think about infrastructure in the future, was back to the question that I asked during our last public hearing on this topic, and that is around the long-term need for potentially considering a septic system in town. You know, I do think that this will potentially lead to some population growth. And I was actually listening to a very interesting podcast on my commute this last week, talking about the need for, or how municipalities that have septic systems are actually using that as a way to monitor public health. And increasingly, that's being used as a metric to gauge sort of health in the community. And as we think about Westford as a growing community, I do think that puts the topic of a public sewer system, it should put it into the conversation of maybe a future master plan and, and when does it strategically make sense for us to consider that? Also, you know, larger developments could have an undue burden on the water table. And that's something that as the town grows, we should just keep in mind. But otherwise, I think that this is a good plan and I'm prepared to support it.
Great. Aaron?
Yeah, I think good comments from the Cameron presentation. I think we also should look at potential revenues, too, because people are focused on the additional costs. But you're going to have, whether it's user fees or tax revenue or even...
That was my oversight. That, that, that did, that wasn't that model.
Restaurants and things like that. So I think there's going to be some revenue to offset potential costs as well. So that's, you have to look at the whole picture, I think. Because right now, there's, you know, empty parking lots sitting there. There's not generating a lot of revenue there. So.
Well, as I said, that was my oversight because they did start by asking about revenue, and then they asked for the cost model, but obviously they go hand in hand. Yep.
So I will say that just, we did take a look, and some of this information has been in the board's packets in the past. But we did look at some existing residential developments in town with a focus, obviously, on multifamily. And it does appear that the most likely kinds of multifamily housing that would result from a bylaw like this would tend to be rental. A lot of them could be apartment buildings. And when you look at the impacts on school-aged children and/or the taxes, it seems like it's more, most likely to be tax-neutral, to potentially tax-favorable. And any chance that we can incorporate non-residential components into this, it just makes it better and better. Obviously, we can't guarantee anything, but we're just looking at some of the most recent examples in our own community and as well as going back a number of years. And so newer residential developments, particularly subdivisions, tend to have the highest number of school-aged children. Home ownership tends to bring in more school-aged children to the schools as compared to rental. And some of the different styles of homes, aside from apartments or single family in-betweens, it's not unsurprising they're kind of in-between the mix. But rental seems to be the most likely outcome from this. We can't guarantee it. And the apartment buildings would certainly be a healthy share of that. And that also seems to have, you know, sort of the, the best ratios for a better, better tax base. And we are trying to incentivize, you know, some of those amenities to be woven into those projects. So it's not just multifamily housing, so. We also did have a number of questions come up from the Cameron senior. They really did have a lot of good questions. A lot of good questions. Some of them stemmed around, and I don't know, Kelly, if you can talk about this, but if this happens, isn't that just going to lead to a lot of, you know, Section 8 housing? And you know, what, what, you know, this is like really privately owned land to be privately developed. And I don't know if you can shed some opinion, you know, there's been some concerns raised about why is this going to do to the kinds of housing? And right now, we only have a 10% affordable housing requirement. I don't know if you can...
Yeah, so, so this is basically MBTA Communities is only one strategy that will address the larger housing needs in the state. So when we look at, you know, it's sort of conflated in some people's minds with migrant housing crisis. I just want to be clear, that crisis and the response to it is actually a more recent thing. This law was passed in 2021 under Governor Baker. So this was to address a very different issue, which is around the lack of availability of market rate housing. And so it's a very different orientation. It's a law that's designed to promote economic development and housing for maybe like middle-income households and upper-middle-income households with, with, when communities adopt that 10% inclusionary zoning requirement, some affordable housing. But it's not really about the capital A affordable housing that we think of when we think about chapter 40B. The other thing that has come up in a lot of meetings is around sort of that conflation of the migrant housing crisis and whether this housing is, is sort of designed to be for migrants who have more recently come to the United States and have ended up in Massachusetts. And I will say this is, as Jeff mentioned, this is around market rate housing. It's really up to developers to create the housing, and then they will be seeking to fill the units with people who can pay market rate for those units. So it's not, there's nothing really about this law that is oriented toward addressing the migrant housing issue. That's going to have to be a completely separate, a completely separate thing that's going to happen at the state level.
Thank you.
You know, one other note I forgot to mention was Jeff and Joe gave approximately a 30-minute presentation that day. And the presentation at town meeting, I think, is like six to 10 minutes.
Six.
And it was about an hour of questions. Unfortunately, I think there's going to be a trade-off. You cut down on the presentation, there'll be more questions that have to then be answered with material that doesn't get initially presented, so.
Good point.
If that, if that Cameron meeting was recorded, is there a way to make that available on the website? Like if someone went to the Westford website looking for information, they can watch a recording of it? As opposed to having to find it?
Should be out on Westford Cat YouTube.
Right.
It is right now.
If it's on the, on the Westford, Westford website, we can direct people, hey, check it out. Here's an hour-long recording, half an hour. It'll be more in-depth.
So you mean on the town meeting section of the webpage?
Yeah.
All right, we can ask the moderator about that?
And is your briefing available, Jeff?
Can you be more...
The, the presentation you presented that day, is that...
The PowerPoint.
Can that be put on the site, the PowerPoint or the PDF?
We can make that available, sure.
Yeah.
The actual speaking was a little...
I didn't, I'm asking for the materials.
Yeah, we can make those materials available, sure.
Great. All right, why don't we go to the audience?
One more question.
I'm sorry.
Jeff, on the letter we got and Joe from the town council basically saying it's going to be just requiring a simple majority?
Yes.
The last sentence says furthermore, in my opinion, the amendment as drafted will not require a vote to be combined with a vote requiring a two-thirds majority.
Right. So for instance, if we were making, originally when we started this process, we contemplated amending the definition section of our zoning bylaw to change the definition of a major commercial project, a major retail project. That would not have been solely for the purpose of multifamily housing. That would have required a two-thirds vote. And if we tried to do this all with one motion, it would need a two-thirds vote. But because we built it now into the actual bylaw, it is just a simple majority vote. We're calling out that in this section of the bylaw, the multifamily housing component shall not be construed as an MCP or MRP. And so that is just a simple majority vote. But if you're combining it with something else, you got to take the higher standard, so. And that's, right now, it's just one standard, simple majority.
Great. Thank you. Okay, board, have anything else?
We also have our Chair of the MCMAC. I don't know if he wants to add anything.
You guys are doing fine. We don't have a quorum, so we're not...
You're still important.
You're still speaking. All right, then I'll go to the audience. Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns, comments? If you do, please come to the microphone, state your name. All right. Seeing none, I think we have a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And can I get a motion to recommend the draft language and a recommendation to town meeting?
Yeah, sure. I'll move that we recommend PB 2401 to amend the zoning bylaw to create an MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District, MCMOD, at the town, town meeting.
Second.
Can we just, with the minor amendments discussed tonight?
Did we amend?
Both town councils' recommendations.
Sure. Okay, yes, as amended this evening.
Terrific. There's a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much, Jeff and MCMAC for all the work that you guys put into this, and Joe. And thank you for coming.
COG has suffered.
We're all one for the right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job.
All right, so why don't we just move right on to the floodplain since we're going a little bit early? All right, moving on to 24, PB 2402, amend zoning bylaw to update the town's floodplain overlay district bylaw by adopting incorporating into section 8.2 the zoning bylaw the minimum federal emergency management approved standards so that the town may continue to participate in the national flood insurance program. Mr. Morissette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are no changes to the draft language, the draft bylaw. I will say that both the language and the draft report and recommendations have been reviewed by town council. I will say that the state's NFIP floodplain coordinator also reviewed both the language and the draft report and recommendations, and they are equally satisfied. They believe this will bring us into compliance, and they have no issues or concerns with this.
Terrific. Bob, any questions, concerns?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
The only question I had was when we're out of comply, I mean, we're out of compliance now. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. So what happens is, as, we have two different watersheds. As the floodplain maps get updated, they sometimes give you sort of a stay of execution until the flood maps get updated, and you have to. So we would have until a town meeting, next annual town meeting. But by, as we mentioned, doing this now, it saves some extra writing and later amendments relative to MBTA communities. So this brings us into compliance now. Dylan did raise at a prior meeting, we did go about and include, I think, in your packet, we have like where the 100-year floodplain is. This amendment doesn't change where the 100-year floodplain is. It really just says, here it is, and, you know, you need a permit, which they already have to get permits, usually from the commission and/or Conservation Commission and/or Building Commissioner. So we also got a little bit of information about some of the existing policies in town. Claims have been filed. There's not large or a lot, a lot of number of them. But it does seem like, given the properties that are in there, it's probably not the worst thing to have this, this coverage with the way things are going. And it's certainly possible that some of those folks are underinsured. We don't have any information on property owners who have private insurance. So this is only through the federal program.
I saw the map. Thank you for including that.
Very welcome.
Bob?
Nope, that's good. Thank you.
Joni?
No, nothing.
Dylan?
No, thank you.
Darren?
That's great.
Anybody from the audience have any discussion on this zoning bylaw amendment? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We want to make a motion to...
Yeah, I'll move that we recommend PB 2402 to amend the zoning bylaw to update the town's floodplain overlay district bylaw by adopting and incorporating into section 8.2 the minimum federal emergency management agency approved standards so that the town may continue to participate in national flood insurance programs.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving along to our next public hearing, PB 2409, 426 Littleton Road. The first hearing on this, so we have a motion...
Move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice for PB 2409.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move that we open the public hearing for PB 2409.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Attorney DeShanes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, Douglas DeShane from Finnern and Nicholson, representing Wilma Realty Trust. Robert Carr, the trustee of Wilma Realty, is here with me this evening. Also with me this evening, Daniel Carr from Stamsky and McNeary, our engineers on the project. As I believe was mentioned, we're seeking two, two permits from the board this evening. One, a site plan review for the property as the use we are proposing is by right, but we do have a site plan review requirement. And the second permit being a stormwater permit under your local stormwater regulations. And these permits are associated with the development of a six-bay commercial property located at 426 Littleton Road. This property is essentially located behind where Sullivan Tire is today. Mr. Carr used to run his business out of that location for many, many years before Sullivan took over. So again, we are here this evening for your permits. I do want to let you know that we've been to Conservation Commission. They've opened their public hearing. We went out of our way to make sure that this site was designed in full conformance with the local wetland regulations. As you can see from the plans, we do have wetlands surrounding a portion of the site. We are somewhat of an island, if you will. But we're fortunate enough to have a significant amount of upland in the... But we're fortunate enough to have a significant amount of upland in the center of that parcel so that we could meet all of their setbacks and regulations, including the installation of a new septic system that is completely outside the hundred foot buffer. We are currently dealing with an existing system that is technically, if not as close as one can be, potentially within some of the existing wetlands. So the Conservation Commission was happy to see that we'd be removing that system and putting in a fully compliant system which will then service both buildings. With that, I'd like to turn things over to Daniel Carr. No relation, by the way. One is a C and one is a K. But ironically, Carr. And I'll leave it to Daniel to give you a quick overview of what we're doing and touch on some of the stormwater attributes of the system.
Thanks Doug. As Doug mentioned, my name is Dan Carr from Stamsky McNary. I'm the civil engineer for the project. So up closer to Littleton Road over here, we're proposing to shift the entrance to the parking lot just slightly, and that was at the request of the fire department because right now the access road to the rear of the site comes by the building over here. So we wanted to get a straight shot from the road to the rear and then the proposed building area. So we're proposing to shift the entrance from here to here. So it's, it's about ten to fifteen feet up on the plan. We're proposing to extend some parking spaces in this area here. And then also, we're proposed to, so currently there's a system of catch basins in the parking lot here that pipe runoff directly to the wetland over here. And so we're proposing to disconnect that direct connection to the wetland and instead send the runoff to a treatment manhole that'll treat the runoff and then into some subsurface chambers here. So the grade is proposed to be brought up here for not only the parking spaces, but also for that drainage system. And so runoff will be treated and infiltrated here from the parking lot where it currently flows untreated into the wetland. Here, as we go along the side of the building and then just beyond the back, rear of the building, we are proposing some additional parking spaces here. And then there is an existing wetland crossing that crosses the wetland here to get to the upland in the, in the rear of the property. And when that bridge was installed, the culvert, there were conduits placed underneath. So when we connect the proposed septic system from the existing building to the new system in the back, we'll be able to use those existing conduits, so we won't have to mess with that wetland crossing to get those pipes in. And so into the rear of the building, in the rear of the property, we're proposing a nine thousand square foot commercial building with six bays, some parking spaces, and like I mentioned earlier, the new septic system. The, the proposed building is proposed to drain to two roof drywells, one in the back, one in the front. And so that'll capture and infiltrate up to the hundred year storm from the roof runoff. And then in the parking area in the access road, we've got some catch basins. We've got three catch basins that send runoff to another treatment manhole and then another subsurface infiltration system here. So we'll be treating and infiltrating all runoff from impervious surfaces in the rear here. As Doug mentioned, we went to Conservation last week. I think we wanted to set up a site visit with both boards potentially so we could be efficient. Other than that, I think that covers most of the engineering aspects of this project.
Great.
Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Now, Joe, do you have anything to add on this?
Not a whole lot, Mr. Chair. I think having a site visit would do everybody well. It would also provide additional time for engineering to finish their technical review.
Yep.
I think it'd also provide the applicant some time to address a couple other outstanding department comments such as the fire department and understanding, can that culvert hold the weight of a, of a fire apparatus going over it? So I think being able to continue the discussion, get whatever concerns you all have. If there's anything specific you'd like different departments to review, and also provide some additional time for engineering to review, that would be a good thing.
Great. All right, Bob, do you have any questions at this point?
I have a couple. I, I think this is really just an oversight in the staff report. But the staff report did make note that a zoning variance was required back, I think, in nineteen eighty-four because the septic system was installed on a residential portion of the parcel. And at this time, the parcel appears to be all commercial highway. I just think it'll make it cleaner if the report indicates that the parcel became all commercial highway at some point in time when a zoning change occurred along 110. So that, that, that for me caused me some concern because all of a sudden, we went from residential to commercial and it looks like from the, from the zoning map, it is commercial.
Yeah, it, when they first, if, if I recall, when they first laid out Littleton Road, they essentially identified the first two hundred feet and laid the commercial all the way down.
Right.
So this is a situation that affects many of the lots. And I think over the years, I've probably brought three or four of them, including the Sheehan property and a few others, to get that commercial line extended to the back.
Of the lot line.
Of the lot line. Because what's between the two hundred feet of commercial and then the residential is the Littleton line. So it's not like there's a lot of residential back there, or that you could even access it.
Right.
So I, you know, I do know, but you are correct. It is now.
So I just think it would be cleaner to have that in the report because the report reads awkwardly. You just, I, my, my first thing I noticed was I looked at the, the Google satellite view of the property and did note that road going to the back of the property, I guess, to, over the culvert to service the septic treatment. With that culvert, I would ask, do you know what the load bearing capacity of that culvert is?
Yes, and in fact, about a year ago, when we were first working on this, we actually had the fire department come out to discuss the crossing as it existed because at this point in time, the fire department is looking for a sixteen foot clear?
They were hoping for twenty.
Twenty. And what we have is sixteen with, you know, two feet of walls. So they came out to inspect that. And at that time, they had asked for that same material. And yes, there was, they were specifically chosen to, to carry the load. So I'm, in fact, I was supposed to do it today. I'm re-sending the fire department all of that information. Mr. Legacey, local guy, did it, so.
That's fine.
Yeah, but yes, it does, I don't know the number, Bob, but it was designed to hold the heaviest truck.
Yeah, well, I'm actually going now more to what the commercial trucks that could come in because of the contractors. And maybe recommending there be signage potentially that states what the limit of, is for that crossing. I wasn't even thinking about the fire, but that's a second, a good point.
I would guess, we have to meet the load of the biggest truck. I, I'm not sure whether commercial trucks accessing this size facility would be bigger than that.
But I think as a, just to be safe.
Oh, no, no, without doubt, sir.
Yeah.
We can, I, I have the information to show that we are more than.
And I did note that, yes, it is the Littleton line. It appears to be a residential neighborhood back there. I was just asking if we could have somewhere on the plans, kind of like what we've done in a couple other developments, just what the measurements are from the closest corner of those structures to both the lot line, the edge of the disturbed area, and the edge of the structure itself. I kind of expect that a Littleton resident might ask us, I don't know if I see any here.
We did notify all of the Littleton residents.
I saw that on the letters list.
Yeah, we notified them. You know, what's behind us is essentially a cul-de-sac that comes in towards, you know, our parcel. And then there's a cul-de-sac. So the house or the end of the cul-de-sac is the one that's directly behind us, you know what I mean?
Right.
That's, that'll be the closest house, and Daniel's pointing where it is. So it's in, in there. What did you tell me today? It was probably a hundred and fifty feet or something, something. Whatever, we'll put that on the plan.
It looked pretty far, but just so we have it on, in the record.
And the good news is it's the one on the end of the cul-de-sac. It happens to be closest to it. So everything is farther away, but we'll put it on the plan.
And just the last question, kind of along the lines of what we did with Makepeace Road a couple of years ago. Like to understand what the kind of work or services that will be done in the contractor's yard building are? What kind of noise generation might be occurring? And whether we have to, then having to discuss what the work hours are, days of the week, that kind of thing?
Sure, we can, we can put that together. I will tell you what's not going to happen here. This is not intended to be a contractor's yard. So there will be no outside storage of materials whatsoever, not proposed, not being asked for. The only thing that will be outside are vehicles in those parking spaces. Everything else will be stored in the building. We are not allowing, of course, any storage of hazardous materials of any kind other than, you know, what's allowed under the, the bylaws, which is, you know, typical household materials. So you could theoretically get a contractor who wants to, you know, keep a couple cans of gas. As long as they meet the Board of Health regulations on that, you might see that there. But other than that, we're not allowing or would, can we have any kind of hazardous materials? There are no drains in these floors, there's nothing, everything's self-contained. So we'll put together a list of allowed uses and what we would expect.
And I would clarify that, the other example was much closer to the homes. There was obviously a lot of concerns. I think here, we're going to show with the information you provide us, that we are pretty far from the residences.
Yeah.
So the noise won't be as much of a concern.
And we've got some good wetland buffer there too, you know? So it's not like it's an open field or.
And there's, what, the wetlands extend behind?
Well, as you can see up at the top, let me see there.
On that side, yes, I was thinking more towards the residences.
You see this is a wetland line, Bob? You can see it curls around.
Right.
So it probably comes around here, and then this one comes around here. So I, I, I think there's a fair amount of buffer back here, right, on wetland?
Yeah, the, the wetland more of a straight line because it, it doesn't go, it doesn't connect to each other.
Okay. They don't. Yeah, we'll show you that.
Thanks.
Joni?
I had a couple of questions similar to Bob's. I, I did see in the narrative the words, you know, contractor's yard. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what is being done here? And that was my question. Is gravel, is it going to be storage materials?
No.
You know, proximity?
I apologize for that use of the word, but I guess I couldn't figure out what you call it.
Yeah.
But no, not, we, we are hoping, I mean, that, you know, you, you'll see small tradespeople or small company tradespeople that, you know, want to store a truck or two here, some material and, you know, sort of, there'll be a bathroom and a small office, and then a mezzanine, you know, like in there, in the bay. So we would expect or hope that we might get some smaller contractor companies, carpenter, electrician, plumber, landscaper. But they will not be able to store anything outside whatsoever.
But could they do prefab work inside, like a plumber cutting pipe?
Okay, I will.
That's the kind of thing we want to understand because that makes the noise, not the storage.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and that was my concern, it's proximity to the Littleton neighborhood, the proximity to, you know, children at Kimball's, things like that. So just for my own clarification, so what is the intent of this building? It's just purely for storage for, it's, it's, there is no, it's not a contractor that is, a single contractor that is working out of this?
We may get one contractor who wants more than, you know, multiple bays.
So it's like a rental, is that what it is? You're renting spaces?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Now I get it.
So the contractor living out of his home needs a place to put his commercial vehicle on weekends.
Got it, understand.
And you, you do mention a good point, though. You, you, you know, there could be, you know, they could cut pipes, fabricate something. If it's a heat and vent person, they might fabricate. So we, you know, of course, all of that would also be indoors, so we, that certainly would help with noise. But certainly a reasonable limitation on hours, so you don't have a plumber cutting pipes at ten o'clock at night, sure. You know, that, so let me, let me dig into that a little of what we might expect, and we can talk about that. But yeah, these are kind of geared for smaller, like somebody said, smaller operations, you know? There's just no space available for those kinds of folks, you know? They are looking at buying a huge commercial building that they might not need. But, you know, in fact, I think there's some units similar to this being built off Route forty, did I see?
The first one was the one on Makepeace.
No, Gary's on Route forty.
Crossing the Bell machine.
There are both, you buildings.
Four seventy-eight Crotten Road.
No, no, I was saying, no, no, but before that.
When I make peace was approved, yeah.
Yeah, Makepeace, that's where the fence company was.
Right across the street.
Yes.
But yes, Route forty as well, which is now under construction.
So Sullivan Tire is not, it's not like someone is buying Sullivan Tire and, that's staying?
No, Mr. Carr owns all of the property.
I understand.
It's a tenant.
Sullivan is a tenant as well.
Okay.
Long, very long-term tenant, but a tenant. The trust controls the property and that's their intention.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Sure.
Just two quick ones. The conduit underneath the existing culvert, that is inclusive of utilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
I see a note of a retaining wall, it looks like it's four feet. Is there anywhere, and I mean, we'll see this on the site walk, is there anywhere where you're going to need a higher than four foot retaining wall? Nope, they're all less than four feet. Fantastic.
Darren?
I think the site walk will be right. I would just look when you do your lighting plan, given that there's running a residential area. Make sure that, that addresses that, you know, it's shielding of the lights and the hours and things like that.
All right, great. I'm looking forward to the site, uh, site walk as well. Anybody from the audience have any questions? Seeing none, Joe, when, when do you think it would be appropriate to have these guys back?
Probably April first, no fooling around. But April first would probably be most appropriate.
Are you going to have Attorney DeShanes?
That's four weeks, so that'd be great. That gives our engineers time to go back and forth, gives us plenty of time for a site visit, that's perfect.
That was the next question, a site visit will be before the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
All right, with that, can I have a motion to continue this to the April first meeting?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you for your time. One thing, Joe, we work with you to coordinate a mutual time on that, our visit. It's interesting, first time the Conservation Commission actually said, we want a site visit, but we want to coordinate with planning. Hey, it's efficiency.
Progress.
All right, guys, well, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to our first general business item, PB 2407, 288 Littleton Road, Suite thirteen, Redthorn Tattoo Studio. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this was approved in front of the zoning board in February to allow the use. There were some general conditions, including limits to hours of operation, but it was approved unanimously in front of the zoning board in February.
All right, great.
Hi, I'm Catherine McDonald, Redthorn Tattoo Studio. Ten Appaloosa Circle, Tinsborough House. And we're here for 288 Littleton Road, Unit thirteen. We're planning on having a body art and permanent cosmetic establishment. It's a private studio, so it'd be myself and Ronald Kamara.
Ronald Kamara, Ten Appaloosa Circle, also Redthorn Tattoo Studios.
Great.
All right, well, I'm sure we all read the submittal. Go to the board with any questions? Bob?
It was a minor, only one minor question, and that was understanding the ownership because it sounded like Ms. McDonald, you were the owner. Then I saw a release that you could represent somebody else.
Yeah.
Is this a partnership or?
No, so he is my son. It's for him, he's the owner, and then I was just helping him out as like applicant's representative.
Got it.
Great.
That's it.
I've been in business before, this will be his first.
This will be my first.
Yeah.
Joni?
No, nothing, thank you.
Dylan?
No questions.
Darren?
It looks pretty straightforward.
All right, so can I get a motion to authorize administrative review and approval?
Just one, I guess, one of the area I thought we would discuss is this is a change of use.
Yep.
Yes.
We have a report that indicates.
It's a hair salon, right?
From town. That it, it won't be any significant change, correct?
Correct, I mean, that was the findings of the zoning board too. They didn't find that there's going to be any significant change in, in their approval.
I think we're good, yeah.
Right, the only change is going to be inside, really.
No changes to the parking lot, no changes to the structure, no changes to the sign boards or anything. Everything's by appointment only, so.
It's good. I'll make, um, let's see, we have a number. I'll make a motion that we approve the PB 2407 special permit?
I don't know if it's lot five or parcel A, because both languages are being used here. But just to indicate that that structure is going to remain, because otherwise it would need to go for review with historic commission. And my last question relative to that is, are there any additional out structures of any type associated with the existing building that might be found over on lots one to four?
Yeah, nothing I'm aware of. There is one shed that's behind the, yeah, where Joe's kind of circling his mouse.
So that's fine, okay.
It's, it's, it, it, it looks like it should be torn down. I don't know how old it is. I've never been inside of it. It's long and narrow, but it's, it's right on that rear property line, kind of up against the field redline trolley easement. But there's no other structures that I'm aware of anywhere else on the property, actually.
Well, thank you.
All right, Joni?
Yeah, I only had a couple of questions. The first one obviously was in relationship to that storm type two versus storm type three, and why you used two instead of three, where three was required. So it sounds like that's been resolved and usually run it.
Yeah, that was just an oversight.
Yep, not a problem. Next question, stormwater O and M. I, I had the question is, obviously, you know, while it's under construction, you know, the owners are responsible, you're now responsible for the O and M on the stormwater, but once you sell the properties, is that stormwater O and M somehow going to be attached to the deed?
Yeah.
And I think that's what was one of the conditions that engineering was, was trying to collect that into a holistic, you know, that our goal is that these lots would all function independently. We provided one stormwater management open O and M, but, and we would record one for each lot, and that's correct, that's what we've done in the past. And that's, I think, would certainly satisfy the engineering department.
Yeah.
And simplify having to create a homeowners association or anything like that.
Okay, so then it'll be, the onus will be on the owner to do the stormwater O and M every three years, or whatever it calls for.
Correct. And we have no issues with, if that's a condition.
Yeah, and that could be a reference in the deeds, and that way there's always something in the chain of title to reference back to the recorded O and M plan.
Perfect, okay. And I also was asking about the existing house, so now that's resolved, so thank you.
Great. Dylan?
Glad to see you're keeping the existing house. I don't have any other questions.
Darren?
Nope, I think engineering covered it pretty well.
Great, I don't really have anything. I'll go to the board, but I don't think we require a site walk on stormwater management, if anyone feels strongly about it.
No.
How do we want to, do we want to direct staff to work on a decision? Do we want to direct staff that, you know, as long as engineering blesses us, we approve it? I mean, how do we want to move forward expeditiously on this?
Should we confirm there's nobody in the audience?
You can do that as well, but this is a terrible business.
But yeah, I think just have staff.
We could always run the decision by the chair, if you'd like.
Right.
Make sure we captured everything that you'd like in it.
Yeah, that'd work.
And our goal is to satisfy all the engineering wants, but we don't have any issues.
All right, great. All right, so then do we have a motion to direct staff to, to approve, well, actually to approve this based upon the discussion this evening?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to come see the stonehouse anytime you'd like.
Thank you.
I'm not sure they're looking forward to rehabbing it or not.
I noticed, I noticed, I noticed it had the name an in at some time, which served as an in.
Yeah, and the stones, I guess, are quite important to the history of it.
Yeah, there was a note on the, about the stones on the assessor's page.
Yeah, that was what the name of the stones were.
Yeah, I mean, every time we meet somebody, they tell us something new about the history of it. There's a bunch of holes out there, and they used to come to the property in the wintertime, and they used to break the granite, and they made cobblestones and brought them back to Lowell. So there's holes, like, just, I thought they were all test holes through the years, but they're not. It's, yeah, so everybody that's come, it's, it's been, it's been very interesting to meet everybody, and that's kind of changed our direction on the, those, that stone's three feet wide.
Yeah.
The depth, I mean, the wall of the house is three feet.
Wow.
And the floor is concrete in between each of the two stories.
Really?
It's like twelve-foot ceilings in the first.
No wonder you're not logging it down. You'd be too much to get rid of it.
Almost a block or so.
Thank you.
Take care now.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, we have PB 1923, subdivision seventy-three, Nutting Road, Wendell Place. Joe?
Sure, so again, Mr. Wyman is here to give a more in-depth discussion on this one, but generally speaking, the project's not really changing the type of house that's going to be constructed in each individual lot. Usually, I think, in your conditions of approval, you want up to five house plans. They're going to have five different house plans that were originally intended, so there's a change for that, which will cause some, some changes to grading throughout the site, and limits, and to the limits of tree clearing. So we wanted to bring this in front of you all, just to ensure that you were comfortable with this as a minor modification. Additionally, in there, they're looking to have a partial lot release on one of the lots in order to construct a model home. It wouldn't provide a full occupancy permit or anything. They'd still have to meet all conditions and put in all the infrastructure, but it would just be to be able to construct a model home on the property. If there's anything you want to add, Matt?
Yep, thank you, Joe, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. And just to paraphrase again quickly, that we're here for a stormwater permit modification. Plan I just handed out, which is also in the overhead, this is for Wendell Place, I'm sure most are familiar with it, it's on Nutting Road, further down the trolley line, where the trestle crossing is on Nutting Road, which is the stretch of Nutting Road closer to kind of Route forty, behind the Mario's Restaurant, in that neighborhood that's, that's behind there. The plan import approved this development, and it's an open space residential development back in December of twenty twenty, it was actually December thirty-first, oddly enough. It's a twenty-seven-and-a-half acre development with the open space plan, over, just over twelve acres are preserved with this development. We've been working with the developer, who's working with the owner, Toll Brothers, they had a family commitment tonight that prohibited them from attending. He called me almost on the way here, so he wanted to apologize to the board for not coming. He wanted to introduce himself. But working with Toll Brothers, they've developed a grading plan, and what it does, and I think the bylaw, or the decision, the way it was written, they could have kind of gone through the, the stormwater plot plan, which is a requirement of the stormwater permit, that, you know, we develop basically site plans for each building permit as they're being sold, and it gives an engineering a, a check to make sure that we're building the footprint that was representative, or if not, that the drainage can handle it. And so I think we could have done this through that. I think they're kind of being a little conservative, and it was, and, and I agree, it was at the recommendation with Joe, to do this all at once, where it is kind of a holistic change to the whole development, and what that'll do is help simplify the building permit later. That doesn't mean that all these footprints are going to be this size. What it does is it gives them and their marketing team the ability to sell any of their models, and all their models are this one or smaller, and so they wanted to have that flexibility that they can ensure that they're going to be able to sell, you know, the unit that they need to on each of these lots. They did update the grading, there was just minor changes to the grading, there was no changes to the roadway design, to the lot line layout, to the open space layout, to any of the preserved or the, the approved limit clearing that we had for the properties that directly abut, abutters, and so there are, and if you look on your plan, there's little red kind of squares, and, and those are where the proposed grading changes are, the tree line changes, and what they've done is just enlarged them, or eliminated a thin strip to, to give them a little bit more room for the grading around the house. We checked the drainage, we submitted the drainage report, there was no changes to the detention basins, there was some regrading up on the hill, as you're coming up Wendell Place, lots, lot one is in the upper left, and then, so lot seven, five, and six, there was some regrading there that changed the amount of runoff that's directed to one of the catch basins, and so we're working to make sure that, that runoff for catch basin three can be handled. It doesn't change the drainage, but we may have to change that to a, a double grate versus a single grate, to make sure that the capacity, the inlet capacity of that catch basin is We did provide, additionally, the roof drain details for all of these were slightly larger. Believe it or not, if you're making the roof drain, roof, the footprints bigger, you're making the roof drains bigger, you're actually reducing the amount of area that goes to the detention basins, because you're putting more of it in the ground with each of the individual roofs, so there was no changes to the drainage design. And, and I said, in capturing the changes of the whole engineering review, we were prepared to revise and resubmit. We didn't have any issues, and we had no issues with their review conditions. And as far as the, the second part of this discussion, I don't know if we want to loop it into, but we did also ask for a release of one of the lots, lot number eighteen, which is in the bottom of this plan, and that's just so that they can build a model home. But there's kind of two different issues. Be happy to answer any questions.
So just for clarification again, where does this stand with engineering, Joe?
So they have reviewed it, they've, I guess, kind of conditionally approved it, they, if the applicant's willing to satisfy their comments and their recommended conditions and their technical review memo, they would, they would approve it.
And actually, I, I think we're going to need to, to extend this, to, to make sure that we don't have any issues with any of the roof drains, the foundation drains that are discharging towards Wendell Place and Lady Constance Way. Engineering review came up late Friday, we got it off to the Toll Brothers, and they just haven't had a chance to, to go through that and see what the impacts are. So unfortunately, that was, I forgot that, I apologize, but they weren't prepared to, to make that decision for today's, in time for tonight's meeting, so we'll need time to discuss that on our own.
Okay.
And come back to the board. Sorry.
Nope.
Kind of an important part of the discussion.
All right, so why don't we discuss the stormwater first, and then we can talk about the lot release? Bob?
On this, I had one question about why lots five and six were special, what?
Those didn't, no, there was a regrade, so two of the lots in that area aren't being sold to Toll Brothers, but five and six, there was a depression that was behind the lots that we were maintaining as a depression, that the runoff from the backyards were, were diverted to that depression, and they've modified it and, and kind of graded it such that that depression gets filled in. And so there was kind of, it, there was just one issue that engineering raised to make sure that that didn't, it might not be five and six, it might be the two at the very end, I apologize, which is eight and nine?
Seven and eight?
Seven and eight, excuse me. Seven and eight. And so they would, they just want to make sure that the, that grading change doesn't impact the drainage down gradient, and that's that catch basin three. The, the capacity of the drainage, the detention basins can handle it, the pipes can handle it, there was an increase in runoff directed to the rim, and so we are going to have to put a second grate, so that, that it's getting into the catch basin and not bypassing it.
Okay.
So that, that will be one change.
Yeah, I just, I was more confused by the fact that one of the lots showed only the modified, and the other lot showed only the approved, and then it was grayed out, like it was excluded.
Yes, and that was, those weren't sold with, I, I think those are going to be built by a separate developer.
Okay.
And/or the owner.
That's it, at the same point.
Joni?
Okay, I do have several things related to the drainage. I, I was very concerned about the engineering comments, where they felt that the, the fourteen February letter stated that the grading changes do not affect the drainage design, but engineering seems to think it does, because more of it is running towards the street, which you've spoken about with now needing a double catch basin. So I was very concerned about that, and I was, I'm happy about the.
And also the two-fold, the roof drain, the foundation drains.
Foundation drains.
So there's, there's kind of a two separate issues, same, same concern.
Right, and that was going to be my other thing, I was, I was going to ask about those. Your detail sheet shows two type-two roof infiltrators, but they're different sizes, so I thought it was kind of confusing that you have two type-twos that are different sizes. I, I'm not sure that they, it doesn't kind, it doesn't make sense. Where is which type-two?
Okay, well, I can confirm that for sure.
Yeah, again, a knit thing. Another real knit thing, i- in the future, if you could include maybe a little bit more of a legend, because it, it takes quite a bit to really look at these.
Yeah.
You know, on the plans, so it would definitely help. I know there's not a lot of room on the plan, but if you could somehow squeak something in.
Unfortunately, that plan was prepared by others, and we were.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to minimize our time that we put into it, but we can certainly clarify that.
Okay, thank you. And then, on one of the lots, it, I, I couldn't quite follow, lot twenty, to me, it looked like your septic tank was under the, the house, so not sure if it just, because I, I couldn't discern what was really going on.
Okay.
But just something to take, to take a look at, but I'm, I'm glad to hear it's being continued, because I, I was, I was very concerned about the, the drainage. So, thank you.
Dylan?
Yeah, I, I am slightly sensitive to engineering's comments here. My recollection on this one was, when we were working on the stormwater for this parcel, aren't we feeding this into some sort of a culvert that runs across the street and into the existing wetlands, right? So if more water's moving down the hill towards the street, that, I, I assume that's engineering's concern, right?
I would believe so.
Yeah, and quickly, and I won't bore you with stormwater, but there is, so that, everything drains towards Nutting Road.
Yeah.
And, and then there's a series of catch basins, or detention basins up on the uphill side that kind of carry the water from Lady Constance and the upper part of Wendell, but then as you get closer to Nutting Road, there's a large detention basin, it's a natural depression.
Yeah.
That's well oversized, I think the peak elevation is six feet below the, the top of the, the basin.
Yeah.
It's just a natural depression. And then as you go further down, there's a, a subsurface infiltration system that picks up the runoff for the closest part of, and that's where there's an emergency overflow that goes down Nutting Road.
Through a culvert.
Almost to the trestle, and, but that's just for over a hundred-year storm events, but.
Yeah, yeah.
So their concern is the drainage as a whole, but yes, anything that's going to Nutting Road, of course.
And just so I'm clear, the areas that are shaded in, because there's kind of red and kind of orange on this, are they the same? Is that additional removal of trees? Is that what that's?
Yes, with the exception of one lot, they actually, we, we're pulling the, the area back in, so if you go, Joe, if you.
So orange is removal, and red is allowing, is keeping trees in?
Yes, we're moving that limit of clearing in, so there's actually a, we're gaining some.
Got it. And the yellow doesn't denote anything on this?
Correct.
Okay.
That's well ends.
Thank you. I am glad we're continuing, but I don't have any other questions.
And we'll try and get clarifications on the drainage issues in particular.
Thank you.
Darren?
Yeah, no, I remember this was a, a lot of, a lot of sensitivity around drainage here. That was a big part of the discussion for a long time, so I'd like to make sure that engineering's all hundred percent fine with this. Just a question, Matt, on this picture, what's, what is this? I was curious. That's there, and there's one over here.
I, I think those are just different options that they have, and I'm not sure whether it's a patio or a deck, or it's, it's various things that their marketing team gives as either extras.
Got it.
They're not, they're not sunrooms, they're not foundations, they're either decks, patios, and then if they're, it's in front, I think it's like a farmer's porch.
All right, some sort of house option, okay. All right, cool. Yeah, I think, I mean, the main thing is the, is obviously the drainage here, was, was one originally going to be the?
It was, that was, and then they changed it to eighteen. One is on the, the fire northwesterly end, and eighteen is the southwesterly.
Yeah, I think that lot is where the direction of a lot of that drainage concern was, from the neighbors anyway, kind of right, right where eighteen is.
Yeah, exactly, in that wetland that's up behind there, and the impacts that go to the wetland, and then onto his property.
Right. So just want to make sure engineering is all good.
Okay. Joe, engineering give you a timeline of how much time they wanted this? Matt?
Well, we have everything kind of ready to go, so to speak, and, you know, we can submit tomorrow, and then keep things on track for the next meeting if possible, like.
So, next meeting is March eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
You have one item on that agenda right now, an administrative review application, so that agenda's available, versus April first, you've had something to continue to that already this evening, and it's highly likely you're going to have the firearms public hearing start.
On the first.
On the first.
Yep, okay. All right, so, well, we'll plan on continuing this until the eighteenth, and we'll get on to the lot release.
Or take action on the lot release?
Yeah, so we'll talk about that now.
Yep.
Bob, questions on the lot release?
Only what's the overlap with this and the change in grading and stormwater management? That's my concern.
Yeah, I kind of wondered the same thing, so I'd be certainly for the release of that lot for the home, but I do see there's both changes on that lot as well.
Yeah, we can't do one without the other.
Right.
Yeah. I, I do, I do realize it's on the very edge boundary of the property parcel, but I think they're all involved in contributing to the stormwater management.
So they wouldn't be able to start building on one, they, I mean, they haven't cleared the lot, or, I don't, there's, there's no work has been done out there, so there's, I think, before the next meeting, I don't picture them doing the tree cladding, we'd have to set up, schedule a pre-construction meeting, there's a whole bunch of things that we need to do to even get to that point, so. But yes, we would need to have that drainage modification to release the lot, yes.
Yep.
So it makes sense to continue both items to the eighteenth.
All right, no, no issues. I agree.
All right, perfect.
That's simpler.
Yes, please.
I'll move that we continue, PB nineteen twenty-three, some requests for minor modifications to the grading plan, and a partial lot release for a single lot for the construction of a, a model home, to our meeting on Monday, March eighteenth, seven PM, here.
Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving along, we have PB one seven zero seven, Spalding Hill Estates, request that the board, one, or A, establish a bond for St. Paul Lane, and B, we release lots eleven through sixteen from the covenant. Good evening, Mr. Guthrie.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
So, another one has received engineering review, they are satisfied with the proposed value in the Form G, they also didn't have any issues with the lots that were requested to be released. I think that would just leave three lots out there to be released, probably have to go in front of conservation for.
No, it'll be seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, there'll be five left.
Five left?
Yeah. All right. Bob, any questions?
No questions.
Joni?
No questions.
Dylan?
No questions.
Darren?
Straightforward.
All right. So we'll do individual motions on this?
Yep, first on the bond, and then on the lot release, please.
So can somebody make a motion to establish a bond for St. Paul Lane from Station fifteen plus zero zero to Station twenty-one plus fifty, in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and nineteen cents?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to release lots eleven through sixteen in the Spalding Hill Estates from the restrictive covenant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Last general business item is PB one nine zero seven, one thirty, one thirty-four, Littleton Road, Grace Community Church, request for minor modification to reflect updated building footprint of phase, during phase one of the project. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Will Sobo, I am project manager for Avison Young, we're the G C on this project. Funny to say, but thankful that the water table was at its level that it is this year. We found, once excavation began, that the basement, it just wasn't feasible, so we went back to the drawing boards, and in addition of just about twelve hundred square feet, already in the previously approved footprint of the building, was proposed, we went through redesign, and we just want to come before you, Joe, thank you for sneaking me on here, to just be above board, make sure everyone's on, on the same page.
Okay, yeah, it looks pretty straightforward, you're actually reducing the footprint.
Yep.
Joey, anything you want to add before we go to the board?
No, sir, other than it's, it's been reviewed by engineering to make sure there's going to be no site impacts, they didn't see any issues, so.
Terrific. Bob?
No. It's, it's, it's smaller, so.
Yeah.
And, and engineering's favorable, so this is easy.
Yep. Joni?
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
No, I agree with Bob's comments.
Yeah, no, it's a smaller footprint, so were you saying basically you, there was going to be a basement, but there's now not?
Correct.
So it's just going to be on a slab?
Correct.
And a smaller footprint, okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion for PB one nine zero seven, Grace Community Church, on your request for the minor modification for the smaller footprint as presented this evening?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck, good luck.
All right, so we have a review of the draft minutes. Let's see here. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from?
I will move that we approve the planning or meeting minutes from February fifth of twenty twenty-four.
All right, discussion, anything, Bob?
Second, first off, second.
Yep, second.
Uh, no, I had nothing.
No, nothing.
No comments.
No comments.
All right, motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I say aye. Correspondents' update? Oop.
No.
Nothing.
Nothing. All right. Anybody have anything else?
Just one thing, Joe, I don't know if you guys have gotten wind of this, but apparently there's discussion at the state level about kind of expanding the accessory dwelling unit kind of definition and what would be allowable, and we talked about this at NIMCOG last, last time, and, you know, Jerry, the guy from Lowell, was saying, basically, if this thing passes, essentially do away with single-family homes, basically, because right now, towns, a lot of towns require like a resident owner to be part of that A D U, where this thing's basically going to say, you don't have to be an owner, you can basically rent out any property you want, so, a lot, a lot of thought on that, I don't know if you guys have heard much of that.
Not a whole lot, other than there was going to be some review of accessory dwelling unit, unit allowances and whatnot, it would just be a, something that would be allowed by right throughout the state, but that was about it.
But Darren, I think, I mean, that would have to be like an MBTA thing, I mean, they can't just force that on us, we'd have to.
Yeah, right now, we have a special permit process.
Right.
To have an A D U, and, yeah, would this do away with that? I, I don't know, it seems like it's still in its early iterations, but could have some impacts.
All right.
Wow, yeah, so great, so the state would say that any property owner could build an accessory dwelling unit and rent it to whoever they'd like. Interesting.
Is this something we might consider writing a letter from us and co-sponsoring with ZBA to our legislators?
I mean, it comes from the town, or NIMCOG, or whatever, but.
Or it might be helpful to have maybe a presentation from NIMCOG on what, what they're hearing in the discussion, and.
Are they, is the state trying to solve the same challenges that they are with MBTA communities like this?
We've only, the only thing I've heard is, what I just relayed, is that they could potentially